Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Monday, September 24th, City Council Meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman McCandon.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Mahavik.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Mayor Jeff.
Here. Please stand to the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll open up for public comment. I would ask if it's items later on in the agenda, you would wait until those items are presented. Is there anyone wishing to address the City Council at this time? I see none. Moving on to the consent agenda, at this time, I would ask the council if they would like to pull any items for separate consideration. I see none. At this time, I look for a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A through 5F. Alderman Curry?
So moved.
Second? Alderman Mahavik?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman McCandon?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes. Thank you, Council. The first action item on tonight's agenda is a discussion to accept a proposal for the donation of funds for improvements to Walsh Park and to amend the fiscal year 2018-19 budget, increasing fund 280 developer donations by $70,000 to undertake improvements to Walsh Park. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it on to Bill for presenting this item.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. I think that at September 10th, the City Council did vote 5 to 2 in favor of an anonymous donation towards the improvements at Walsh Park, as well as the budget amendment that was mentioned. Since that time, at that meeting, there was obviously some questions about a couple of things, that being the lack of bids on the project, or comparative quotes even, as well as the anonymity of the donation. After that meeting, we did have a discussion with the donor, who obviously would love to have the support of the entire City Council, and quite honestly, a feel-good project in right in the middle of our city. And so at his request, we are bringing this motion back to the City Council, and the donor is Mr. Kit Carstens and the Carstens family, who again, are, I think, were well aware of what the project entails. And so he wanted to make that known. He's been obviously a long time influential community member and is looking to give back, and with some good ideas that also tie in with, again, with the Riverwalk Foundation and the art park concept. Addition, in addition to that, excuse me, I had the opportunity to seek out two additional quotes to be added to the third seawall quote. If you remember, there was one quote included for the seawall, that was $53,000. I contacted a local vendor, who was not interested in the entire scope of the project, only the seawall. He didn't want to mess with any of the concrete seawall that was existing, simply drive the new sheet piling and walk away from it. I think that would present some concerns about the integrity of the existing seawall. The second quote that I was able to send out today, as well as put a hard copy in front of you, is from a company called Shoreworks, that I met onsite and had a long discussion about the project. You certainly can see that the difference in price there is there $28,600 for the entire work, as opposed to the $53,000 quote provided from the donor in signature seawall. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you have about this project, but staff is supportive of the changes, and the change from signature seawall to Shoreworks in the motion.
And Bill, you talked, you don't care about it too?
I did, yes. I had the opportunity to be with the, yes.
Thank you, Bill. Alright, Alderman Curry?
Yeah, Director Hobson, thank you for getting this quote. I think it kinda shows, when you get quotes, sometimes you find them pleasantly surprising. So we would need to, if this goes forward, we'd need to change this motion to show the $28,600 amount plus, we're talking the 7% contingency that was on the original one, it would be a different amount, obviously.
We did, and that's why I didn't, when we put the quote together, the intention, you know, initially was to match the city's max exposure on the project, would be to match what the donor would be in. And they're at $70,000. Our intention would be to not, again, not to exceed $70,000 on our match, but with this new quote, obviously that drops about $25,000. So I didn't change the budget amendment amount of 70,000. Is that what you're asking?
Well, that and, well, for example, in the recommended motion, it talks about approving the quote of, you know, 53428 with an additional 7% contingency. So I guess what I was asking is, so we're gonna change that to 28.6 with a 7% contingency?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's still got the old one in there.
But then you're saying that you would, you're, so I guess I'm confused, is why we're still leaving it at 70 then? I mean, wouldn't we just sort of split the difference on that or something?
We could. Honestly, the whole amount at this point, the seawall was completely our project, so we were entirely responsible for what the seawall was, plus the contingency, plus the prevailing wage on the pathway, which would be performed by NLD's quote. That was our, that was our entire exposure. The seawall, plus the 7% on the seawall contingency, plus the $12,000, estimated $12,000 for prevailing wage above and beyond the initial quote from the Neiman.
Okay, I guess I just don't understand why we're not changing the budget amendment amount.
I guess at this point, I was just treating it as not to exceed. We won't ever get anywhere close to that.
Okay, so, so, okay, let me.
But at the, the other part for us was at the time of the printing of this or the distribution of this, we didn't have that quote in the idea. So I didn't know what that was gonna be to change that motion, so we just left it at that 70.
Right, no, I understand that part of it. But we'd be looking, so our exposure at this point, where it's shown, would be the 28.6 plus 7% of that, plus the 12, and change whatever it was for the prevailing wage.
Correct.
So that's really what our exposure.
Yes.
Alright, yes, thank you.
And then can I also suggest, Bill, that we waive competitive bidding here as well, since Shoreworks seems to be the contractor of the building?
Any other discussion by Council? Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, question to the attorney, considering we approved this at the last meeting, is there anything that we have to do to negate our vote from the last meeting?
My memory's not that great. What did we approve?
Basically, the motion at the bottom here is what we approved. Everything at the bottom is what was approved at the last meeting.
Except for the donor's name.
Except for the donor's name, correct.
You mean 6A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The question is, if we're voting on the same thing again, this meeting, other than a name change?
Well, we're, are we awarding the contract to Shoreworks in this motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a different dollar amount, a different contract.
Do we need to vacate the 5 to 2 from the September 10th motion to be reconsidered, because the applicant is the one that's partying to us for reconsideration, under losing the anonymity of the donation and putting the Carstens family name on that donation?
Well, yeah, that's not.
That's what you're, that's what you're asking, right, Andy? Do we need to vacate that other?
That's the question. Do we need to vacate the last vote that we did last meeting?
How about calling it reconsider?
That's fine. I'm fair. How we do it, I'm just looking at what is the legalities and, you know, that we do it properly, that's all I ask. That's why I asked you.
The only thing at Shoreworks is not on the agenda?
Yeah, it was just from the, from our discussion last time, there was a part that was requested to get some polls.
So even, even at the last meeting, you never authorized the work. This is just approving the donate, accepting the donation, of course. Now it's from Kit, his family, and you're increasing your fund expense, budget to $70,000.
That won't be that high.
David.
We're lowering.
To whatever the number is, but we're not awarding the contract.
David.
We are, and on the agenda, there's no.
There's no motion for the last.
And the motion within the supplement is listed as that, on the agenda, there's no names mentioned.
So again, it's the name change, like Bill just said, you know, more than anything else. I just wanted to make sure that there's no legal.
Well, I understand, but signature's not on the agenda either. These are pretty clear rules. So what I would recommend is you approve the motion however you would like it to read, and then that, okay, you asked the lawyer, right? So, I mean, I gotta give you a legal answer. So I would suggest that you approve the motion that you want to approve tonight, and then just to make sure we cross the Ts, we're gonna put on the consent agenda at the next meeting, motion ratified, the contract to Shoreworks in the amount of $28,600 in the way of competitive bidding, and then we'll be good.
Okay.
You really, when, the case law is really clear that on an open meeting, you have to have on the agenda the contract that you're going to award, and the amount you're gonna award it for. And so, I get the intent, everybody's going the same direction, which is fine. So if it's okay, we'll just clean it up that way at the next meeting.
Okay.
So the motion can read as, except, you know, we understand Shoreworks is the objective contract, and Kit's name is on it. So if that's not clear to Mike, could you repeat the motion? If you repeat the motion, then everybody will understand what they're voting on. Get a motion, first of all.
Yeah, and we done with discussion?
I think so, I am.
Is there any other discussion by Council? No. I'll attempt this here. At this time, I look for a motion to accept a proposal for the donation of funds for improvements to Walsh Park and to amend the fiscal year 2018 budget, 1819 budget, increasing fund 280 developer donations by $70,000 to undertake improvements to Walsh Park, while also...
Reconsidering?
Reconsidering?
Yeah, reconsidering the action taken at the last meeting, to include the family of.
Kit Carstens.
Or the donor.
Didn't we, excuse me, didn't we approve the other company last time?
Not on the motion I read, well.
We did, at the last one.
We approved that, proceed with the word.
Andy, can I see that motion?
It's in today's minutes.
It's in today's minutes, too.
You're saying this is the.
Oh, it's in today's minutes? Let's look at the minutes from today, then.
No, there's no.
Because that would probably be.
There's no minutes.
Not yet.
That means it's a proposal, but it's not the actual.
It's in today's agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The minutes.
Yeah, you're right, in the packet before this.
I like that idea. Yeah, signature's in here on an approval of their quote, and that needs to be reversed. I think we haven't proceeded on that.
No, right. We haven't done anything with it, because of the, when we approached the donor afterward, they certainly wanted to bring it back and make it known, so that the council had.
Right, but when there was the request by the councils for additional quotes, did we actually make this motion to approve their quote at the last meeting?
That's what was approved.
That's what was, yes.
Since that, since then, the donor came out.
Should we reconsider?
I would, I would pull this, is what I would do. Pull it from the agenda, we'll get an appropriate motion to take the right action, and we'll bring it back at the next meeting. That's what I would do.
Does that affect the movement of this project for, I mean, I know it's getting close to.
No, we're, we're one week away.
I, I think.
Yeah, at this point, so.
At the maximum, it's maximum, yes.
I mean, I want it to be done right, that's the, that's the most important thing here. On a pretty, you know, at a comfort level, as well as doing it right, that's the most important.
Hi, someone just asked for a motion to pull this out?
Yes, a motion to remove this out of our table until the next meeting.
Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderman Curry?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman McCandon?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The next items on the agenda is discussions to approve an ordinance amending Section 8 Developer Donations of the City of McHenry's subdivision ordinance, and an ordinance amending Article 4 of Chapter 26 Water and Sewer Capital Development Fee, Section 26-202, amount of the City of McHenry Municipal Code, both providing for the reduction of fees by 50% through September 24th, 2020. At this time, I'll go ahead and pass it over to Attorney McArdle.
Not to try and pass the confusion of the last item, but I'll try. This item and the next item, which is the proposed amendment to the annexation agreement relating to the Oaks of Irish Prairie, are before you on the same issue of whether the City Council would like to consider a reduction of its impact fees, one for the annexation agreement on the Oaks of Irish Prairie, and the other in its subdivision control ordinance and its municipal code, by 50% for a period of two years. I think they're out of order in the sense that the proposed amendment to the existing annexation agreement requires a higher vote by the City Council. So I talked to the mayor about this and the city administrator, and it would seem to make sense that we address that first, to determine where six of you would like to go on this issue, and then that might dictate where we're gonna go with our municipal code in general. So the people from D.R. Horton are here, if you could step up to the podium, in case there's any questions. If everyone agrees, we'd like to get a temperature on the proposed amendment to the annexation agreement to reduce the impact fees by 50% across the board for a period of two years, until September 24th, 2020. And if you're, I'd like, if you want to go this direction, is to get some consensus, so we understand where the votes are going. And if you're not interested in adopting that type of concession on the agreement, and then of course, in the ordinances in the next motion, is there a specific alternative you're interested in, that we can talk about before we vote? So, if you could go round the horn here.
Yep, negative. I'll go ahead and start off discussion by Council asking any questions to D.R. Horton, then I'll go ahead and have the, you all, if you want to say anything. At this time, open up for discussion by Council. Alderman Santi?
Yeah, over the past few days, being able to absorb some more information, and I thank staff for getting it to us, and looking at this, and having discussions with the mayor also, knowing that D.R. Horton is in front of us tonight, and looking at, moving on this, thinking they wanted to probably move on it probably 60 days ago. The concerns I had, I mean, still concerns are regards to 50%, also the timeframe. With staff's information, knowing that there are research and studies out there that we can do, and probably get a better handle on where we should be on impact fees, and be able to take that further into the future, in the next few years, whomever comes forward to us. I'm under the understanding that somewhere in the area of six to 12 months out there, that we can have more of a hard-line idea of what we're looking at regards to fees. I'm willing to accept the 50% going for one year, and at that time, sometime between nine months to, the nine months to 12 months out, we'll have more or a better understanding, or a hard understanding regards to doing some work internally with staff, and doing some studies with a third party, to determine exactly where we should be. We relook at it a year from now, and we'll be able to give these developers, and whomever wants to come forward to the council, a recommendation at that time. But I'm willing to look at this for, willing to offer my acceptance for 50% for one year.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Discussion? Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, we talking 50% straight across the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that includes the water sewer fees?
Yes.
Can I find it very difficult to... Are we gonna go over our residents, and are we gonna take and reduce the debt fee by 50% for the next year? No? That, that pay, and that's part of what the water sewer capital development fees are for. I mean, basically, when we went out and we expanded the South Waste of Water Treatment Plant, it was designed and planned for future growth, and future growth needs to pay for it, for part of it. We're asking our residents to pay for it, and again, these hookups are to offset some of that cost to save the average taxpayer in the City of McHenry that uses our water and sewer, the savings. And by reducing these impact fees, we are reducing the savings that the average resident saves. So therefore, I cannot take and support this, as long as we are not reducing the city water and sewer portion. It was mentioned at the last meeting that we need to be competitive with our neighbors. And again, I still, unfortunately, we, we have a community that we haven't received as far as information, as far as what their impact fees are, which is just about next door to us, which will significantly impact, pretty much impact the city as far as traffic, as well as schools and everything else. And I just feel that to some extent, we need to look at that, as far as, if we're gonna be competitive, then we should be competitive in what they're charging, and not just cut everything in 50%, because if you look at the school fees, I'm sure that the City of McHenry has always collected heavy school fees compared to everybody else, because we did the study and others didn't, or whatever they had decided on. But again, if you look at the Deegan property, you know, lake was dredged, and a sewer water facility was built, well, you know, in that annexation agreement, fees had probably been reduced as far as what's coming into 156. And then, so the brunt is again on the residents of the City of McHenry. So once again, we're looking at impacting the residents of our town. And I don't know about anybody else's feelings, but I have to look at, I was elected to look at what was the best as far as our residents, as far as their costs and their benefits, and that's why I have to make the decision I made.
Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize, Alderman Glad, but I have to respond to that. The impact fee, the water and sewer capital development fees, that any of the subdivisions would pay into, whether it's the one before you tonight, or any of the other four that are listed in the report, those capital development fees would not go to pay off the existing debt that the City of McHenry has. In fact, the new homes that are built on those lots, that start to pay the $29.52 base fees for water sewer, and the $6 fee for the Phase 1 of the South plant expansion, those fees would go to pay off that debt, but any of that debt service, but any of the debt ser, any of the impact fees that would be gained by these new houses would not go towards that debt service. I just needed to clarify that.
Then Administrator Morfield, where would those fees go?
Where would the, they go into our capital development fund for expansion in the future. And again, the capacity shown that we analyzed staff-wise is our water capacity is about 57% on the number of funding, and the sewer capacity is 73%. We have the capacity to absorb the 300, and even if you include the homes that are part of the standard fee reductions, it's about 335 total homes between the five subdivisions and the empty lots throughout the city, is that we could increase the water and sewer, the usage of the water sewer system, and it would have minimal impact, under a couple percent, impact on the water capacity and the sewer system capacity. So we would not have to expand the system based on the homes that would be built in these developments.
And I understand that, but the question I have is, so that's locked in, or future councils or this council could decide that those funds could help pay off the debt? Because again, our residents are paid more because of the fact that we built out the treatment centers for future development. And so what you're saying is, is future development will pay for future development down the road, and not for the expansion that we just saw?
Yeah, what goes to pay for the expansion is the fees that a new home would pay in their water sewer fees. Again, that's the $29.52, the $6 debt service that we already had existing, and the $2 and $4 base fee that all residents pay for water and sewer. Then that goes to maintenance and exist, maintenance of the system and existing debt service.
But again, like I say, that doesn't mean the future councils can't change that, correct? As far as what, what we use those fees for?
Well.
That might be the structure that we have set up right now, but that doesn't mean that councils in the future could not change that, and decide to use that to pay off some of the debt?
I suppose.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Hold on, McCandon?
I just have to make a point that not even future councils, this council could change anything at any time. So that's, what we're asked is to vote on what is right before us, not predict the future. That said, I'm gonna reiterate the things that I've said in the past. I feel very strongly that it is important, especially given in light of what Director Morfield just spoke about, clarification of those water and sewer fees, that we address what is right before us today. And that is a development that is willing to come in, that for an area that has sat vacant for a decade, and someone's willing to step forward, and that revitalization of that subdivision will, that's, and bringing that, not only the quality of life in that subdivision, and the other subdivisions as well, of course, the quality of life that subdivision, but also considering the fact that stores, restaurants, businesses, or are going to get the benefit of the new residents. And having spoken to several realtors, who have told me that, that people are seeking brand-new homes. They don't, they're not looking for someone moving out of an existing home, they're looking for new homes. And we have this potential here of bringing folks into our community, and into those subdivisions, filling them. Any, you know, so we're losing 50%, but if we didn't get, if we don't approve this, they're not gonna develop, and then we get nothing. So we're, it's still a win-win. And it's not like it's ongoing. I would've had a concern with that. It's for two years. To me, that's just an incentive package, like we've done with businesses. And I, you know, sure, and it's brought up, would I like it to be 30%? Sure, I would. I've said that publicly. But am I willing to go 50% to get this going? Absolutely. Because something is better than nothing, and that's what we've had for a long, long time, is nothing. And again, and it's not my word, but I, and while I'm elected to care for my word, I also believe that it's in my duty as alderwoman to consider what's best for the entire community. And I think what's best for the entire community is to have this development move forward, and not only interact with the. and not only attract the, yeah, subdivision, the businesses, the restaurants, everything involved.
Thank you. Alden Schaefer?
In also clarifying something that Alder McGlynn brought up too, but would, would filling these and building these homes and once those residents are in there, would, they're gonna start paying those impact fees as well, correct?
No, impact fees are paid...
I mean, not the impact fees, the water, the water fees that we have going, those new residents...
Which goes to the debt service.
Would start. So by adding to the, the whole pool of fees going, does that change the time? Were those calculated into how those fees were structured? Meaning, is there a benefit to getting more people into that pool to maybe lessen the time of what those, of what those fees are for all the current residents?
Right, but they were not figured in to the original study because they were not on the system, but it would lessen the amount of time.
Okay, so that would be a benefit.
I think I said build out, it build out, it would add about eighty-three thousand dollars a year in additional overall revenues through, through the rates, through the water sewer rates to go towards the debt service and maintenance. And we could break out the thirty dollars a home times three thirty-five, I guess is the bill, but that's what it would add towards the debt service for the South Plant.
Yeah, my point is that there would be a reduction, possible reduction in the amount of years that all the current residents would have to pay into that as well.
Correct.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Alden Curry. Alden Curry?
Yeah, just a couple of comments from listening, some of the things and looking at the packet. And I do appreciate the additional information that was provided. It does clarify a few things. First of all, just comment on capacity versus debt service. Again, that's the way we do it, so. But if you pay into a fund for future capacity expansion and you don't pay into it, then those funds aren't there. So for example, maybe not so much the water because we are pretty, like, what was it, fifty-seven percent out of the west? But the sewer is gonna move up to, if all these, all these were built, not just this, this particular, the Oaks, but it's gonna move to about seventy-six percent. My understanding is that at eighty percent, when we hit eighty percent, we have to start planning the next expansion, is that correct? It's a state requirement, right? So if we, if we get to seventy-six percent, we're not paying into it, we don't have those funds available. And so if you're right, you know, and housing does take off and we build out more in the future, we're not gonna have those funds available for that future expansion. Because if you're talking about building for, or saving for future expansion, you have to actually do the savings. You can't not do it. And then, what are you gonna do later? Catch it up? I mean, double the fees later and catch it up? So from a capacity standpoint, I think you have to still be concerned about that. You know, I looked at, and you know, from an incentive standpoint, I understand it's a business incentive and we have done that with other businesses. If this is a million dollars over, if it passes, this is a million dollars roughly over two years. I don't know, too many incentives we've done at that level. So it is a different realm that we're talking about here than what we've ever done before as far as I know. And then finally, the level itself, the fifty percent, I understand that, you know, obviously that's what the petitioner would like to see and brought that to us, but when you look at this information that is presented to us and the comparison with the other communities and the graphs of what happened over the years and, you know, where housing starts and housing starts dropped off and where the fees were going, you know, it would cause me to wonder why we didn't just, why we wouldn't just go back and look at, well, if we think that there's anything to do with fees and housing starts, which I'm not sure, I mean, it's the economy mostly, but if we did, take it back to the two thousand and seven level, which is actually a twenty-one and a half percent reduction. And that would actually put us below, never been on the page except for, and we've got equivalent with Algonquin, so we'd be below Lakewood Hills, below Crystal Lake, below Humley, below Cary. We'd be about equivalent with Algonquin and Woodstock. And the only one that would be lower than us is Richmond. And that's because they've temporarily reduced or eliminated their school, or at least that's part of it. So I guess from a level standpoint, I have a hard time supporting the fifty percent when I look at that. I mean, if it's twenty-one and a half and we set to twenty-five, I guess, you know, I could maybe certainly look at that, but fifty percent just seems like a number out of the air and I just, I just still don't, I don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Any other discussion by council? Alden Schaefer?
One of the things that I didn't see on here, but I did do some research and find out, though, I had a question last time about, a lot of residents believe that it was by doing this, it would be tied to increasing their home values, but the...
Did you find any information on that, Ross, by the way?
The current home values and what they have done? Because what I found is that they, the home values in the City of McHenry evolved over the last six months to a year.
Yeah, there's a, we didn't put the whole historical comparison in there, but there's a, there's a numbered list of one through nine, I think. I think it's page one nineteen of your packet. And it's in the last one, the median, the median home value is approximately one sixty-eight, but we got some recent sales data from one of our local realtors that went through and pulled information off, obviously, recent sales and that the median home price sales has been around, is around two hundred and seven thousand right now. And if you looked at, he actually provided a chart going back in ten years or so that started higher, obviously dipped down, and now it's come back to the two hundred and seven thousand level. If you give me a couple of minutes, I can tell you what the exact numbers were. But yeah, there's actually, there's about an increase in that, that valuation. Or at least, or at least the sales price.
Alden McGlynn?
Yeah, so the, the hundred and sixty-eight thousand that we're talking about, that is the average sale price and not the average assessed value?
No, that's the, that's the median home value.
Assessed value?
Yes.
For taxes?
Yeah.
Okay, just so that we know the difference.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I've seen a few sales just in my subdivision. I'm kind of amazed at homes that were, people were trying to dump for a hundred and forty-two, a hundred and forty-three thousand and now selling back to a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty thousand where they were. And to be honest with you, the more homes we have available and it makes it that tougher to sell your house. And therefore, if you wanna sell, you wind up reducing it a few thousand here and a few thousand there. So competitively, the more open stock that you have on the market in the city, the less that you possibly could be getting for your house unless you have, instead of an average house, you have a specific type of home that, that everybody wants.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Standing up there very patiently.
Here to answer any questions.
Well, I actually, I just opened it up for discussion, Mike.
Okay. All right. You can go ahead and have a seat for a second.
Sure.
And we'll go ahead and open it up for Brian Snellton. Would you like to come up and say a few words? You can state your address for public record, that'd be great.
Sure, one six one four Conway Circle. Mayor Jet, council members, thanks for allowing us the opportunity to speak directly with you in regards to this annexation agreement for the Oaks of Irish Prairie subdivision. I've been a resident here from McHenry for ten years and over the last ten years, due to the recession, we've all seen our home values drop. And just recently started to see some come back throughout the city here. Since the election of Mayor Jet, we've started to see some new business come back to the city and there's a buzz, all the good things that are happening. You could just look down the downtown area, a few years ago, you drive through there, you're not seeing a lot of people. Now, you kind of crawl through there and there's people all over the place. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership and vision to help transform McHenry into a place people want to come to. I was unable to come to the last two meetings in regards to this agreement due to conflicts with work, but I did attend the informational meeting with the developer and builder. A lot of our questions were answered, our concerns were heard, and I'm very thankful for that meeting. That meeting also provided us all with a little bit of a glimmer of hope that we would start to see some building again in our subdivision. You see, over the last ten years, we've been kind of held hostage to our homes. Our home values are far undervalued for, for many years. And for some time, I couldn't take advantage of refinancing when they had all the stuff going on, just because of how low valued my house was. I even had the deputy tax assessor for the McHenry County, for McHenry County, tell me he couldn't believe that our subdivision was so undervalued. So the way for so many to get out of the subdivision was to either foreclose or short sell their home, which further hurt our values. In the meantime, we've seen some overgrown weeds in vacant lots, we've had suspicious activity in the undeveloped areas that have caused concern for our neighbors who like to exercise through that area, allow our kids to ride their bikes. Just this weekend, we had the police chasing people on foot at three AM through our yards. I've read and been told that some of the council here feel bad for our residents, but don't believe this is in the best interest of the city. I strongly disagree with that statement. Building more homes further adds tax revenue to the city versus zero dollars that we're getting now. It further brings new people in the city to patronize our restaurants, our businesses, providing further sales tax to the city. It further adds more children to our local sports teams, making McHenry more competitive to other communities. And I say that as a coach for my daughter's softball team and a member of the board of directors for the McHenry Pigtail Program. The list can go on and on, benefits the city from additional building here. I hope that we're not overlooking the benefits I've mentioned before because of a short-term loss to the reduction in fees. I know you've all been provided with the payback analysis by Mayor Jet and other analysis of these fees. I understand it's not two thousand and eight and sometimes we could have demanded those higher prices before. But as residents, we've taken plenty of that loss in our home values, tax revenue, so on. So I'm asking you to make a difference. Let's do what's right for the city and get the homes going again. My fellow, fellow neighbors here and I are here today to make our voices heard by those elected by us, we're watching, we're listening, we will be voting. I hope the council strongly considers the proposals before you and approves them. We support this. We can't continue to kick the can down the road and we ask for you to vote yes on this. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. The next person on the list is Dawn Lucas. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Please step up to the podium to state your address for public record, please.
Hi, I live at sixteen eighteen Conway Circle, also in the Oaks of Irish Prairie. I've attended the meetings, I attended the one with Pierre Horton and the developer, and I attended the West City Council meeting. The reason I did that was because I wanted to hear and I wanted to see and I wanted more information to hear for myself how people stood on this issue. I've also had many, many conversations with my neighbors. We've lived in the subdivision of the Oaks of Irish Prairie for the last eleven years and truly enjoy our community, but we're ready for our neighborhood and our subdivision to be finished. At the last city council meeting, a statement was made that you can feel sorry for the people who live in these subdivisions, the Oaks of Irish, that Irish Prairie and Legend Lakes. But it's not about them, it's about the community as a whole. As I agree with that statement to a certain point, the families that live in these subdivisions are directly affected by this decision. We were promised so many different things when we moved into these neighborhoods. We were promised parks, we were promised a clubhouse, a pool, none of these things have come to fruition. At this point, there's only fifty-four houses built in our subdivision with empty lots scattered throughout that are not taken care of, or that were not taken care of until just recently. They look terrible. There is an entire section of our neighborhood that is unfinished, but it has roads and lights, which seems to be attracting unwanted, attracting unwanted activity from strangers. We found trash, beer bottles, liquor bottles, we even found people sleeping in their cars back there. Our children are no longer able to utilize this area. This is part of their neighborhood that they cannot use because of this. Our houses and our vehicles have been vandalized and just the other day, as Brian spoke about, there was a pursuit at three o'clock in the morning going through our neighborhood. And I can't help but think that some of that has to do with the fact that it's unfinished and vacant area. And members of this community and other people know that. They know that there's no one back there. I'm not asking you to feel sorry for us, but I am asking you to help us finish our neighborhood. For the last eleven-plus years, we've had absolutely no control over our association, meaning that we've had absolutely no control over what happens or what is allowed in our neighborhood. This is completely unfair to us, the homeowners, your community members. And the only way for us to gain some control is for our houses to be built, not to mention that we're paying almost fifty dollars a month, which is close to six hundred dollars a year for not much. That's what we have to pay in our association for them to mow the lawn. And because there's so few houses, we, the fifty-four families that live in there, are burdened by this. So you talk about other people being burdened, we've been burdened for the last eleven years, paying this, a huge amount of money. Even if we wanted to sell our houses, they'd be way too difficult to sell anywhere close to what we spent in them. You're right, the decision is not about us, but it directly affects us. Building more houses in these subdivisions will bring more revenue to McHenry on so many different levels. Or they can just head over to another town like we've already seen happen. I'm not saying that a fifty percent reduction is the correct thing to do. I don't know, I'm just a school teacher. I don't, I don't know what the correct reduction is. But it is definitely something that needs to be looked into hard to get the ball rolling and to get these communities finished. We are your community members, we are your taxpayers, and we are your voters. And we deserve to have our voices and our concerns heard and taken very seriously. Wonder if you guys might feel differently if you actually lived in these neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment regarding this item?
I'm Brian Wilson seventeen thirteen Dundalk. You might remember me from last time. If not, you remember the shirt. But I want to say I really like the proposal about potentially doing it for a year. If it takes six months to a year to do a study to figure out what the amount, the fair amount is that the fee should be, you know, I think doing a fifty percent reduction or whatever the reduction is for a year to allow development to begin again in McHenry is actually a really good idea. Comparing our impact fees to other municipalities' impact fees may or may not actually be comparing apples to apples because for a developer, the impact fee is a percentage of a home sale. Well, I mean, you know, I don't like Crystal Lake all that much necessarily, but Crystal Lake homes, the newer ones at least, are selling for more money than McHenry homes. So their impact fees would be, even if they're higher, they would be a smaller percentage of the home sale potentially. So developers might still be interested in building there even if the impact fee is higher. You know, I feel like we should look at what we actually need to get as a city out of these impact fees to cover our expenses, not just necessarily comparing what other people are charging, you know? And, you know, if we can buy time by, you know, extending it for a year, extending kind of an olive branch out to builders, see who comes. Maybe there's a lot of interest, maybe we find out that thirteen thousand dollars is where we need to be. But, you know, thirteen thousand five hundred per lot over the next year is money that comes into the city. If you don't lower it at all, I fear you're gonna get zero dollars per lot and there's gonna be no developers coming into the city. So anyway, I just wanted to say I thought that was a really good idea.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to make a public comment at this time? Anyone else that would like to make a public comment at this time? Please state your name and address for public record. I'm swapping my phone. Here.
Don't do that.
Don't tell.
CJ Niemack, seventeen oh-nine Dundalk Lane. I think about the long-term consequences of this. If you look at ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line, I look at a community that continues to develop, the commercial development that's possible from this, seeing that vacant commercial lot sit there on veterans, waiting for a light to be put in at thirty-one, and veterans for a decade now. I think there is an enormous revenue stream to the city of McHenry by getting builders to complete that subdivision and then hopefully entice more commercial development. I don't see any, any harm in reducing those impact fees, if it's for a year, if it's for two years, whatever that is, to bring in more houses so that you end up bringing in more commercial development. I envision in ten years, with builders like Dr. Horton coming in, you know, a Target, a Mariano's on that, at that intersection, all of a sudden, new businesses coming and building up. And then on top of that, and by this time, my kids will be gone anyway, but you're talking about improving the education system, you have more people coming in, more tax revenue, all of those things can't hurt. Kind of the whole rising tide, you know, raises all ships kind of thing for the whole deal, so that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, CJ. Anyone else? Dr. Horton, would you like to say anything?
While he's walking up, I'll say something. So where we are, you were here as well, and you can, you can read the city council, and we'll have to deal with our agenda items, but it seems clear to me that the proposal by the developer, come on up, come on up, the developer by, the proposal by the developer is fifty percent over two years, correct?
That's correct.
And now, we didn't hear from two of the aldermen, but at best, you have five votes, and so you need to do something to attract a six, if that's even possible. And the only suggestions, and I'm just summarizing here, is the possibility of going fifty percent for one year or twenty-five percent for two years. And I don't know whether that's going to cause the vote to go to six or not, but you need six votes or it will fail. So now.
First of all, thank you for having this discussion. We greatly appreciate all the thought that has gone into this topic. First, I guess I'd like to take a step back and talk about what is in the four corners of what we are requesting in this annexation agreement. The sewer and water capital development fees, which have been the source of a lot of discussion over the last few weeks, are not covered by the annexation agreement. Their municipal ordinance, amending the amendment that's in front of you in this annexation agreement has nothing to do with the sewer and water capital development fees. The number fifty percent has been spoken of a lot, and that's not exactly accurate. It's not a fifty percent reduction, because there are certain fees within the annexation agreement that we are leaving alone entirely, including the operating fees, which are meant to sort of bridge various entities from the time that a home is sold until it goes on the tax rolls. So we are cutting the school impact fee, the park, library, but the operating fees for those entities is being left alone. You know, it's, it's, I do this a lot. I'm in a lot of municipalities, talking about these sorts of issues, talking about developments. I will say it's not every day that I come to a meeting like this and you hear this kind of input. As a builder, it really makes you want to do this deal, it makes you want to, it makes you want to help all these people. So in the interest of hopefully getting the deal done, we would consider a fifty percent reduction for a year. Let's get the shop open, let's get homes built, let's get this thing underway. And then in a year, if we really, if we need it still, and if it's absolutely necessary, then I will come back in front of you and make the best pitch. And you guys can either hear me out and agree with me, or you guys can shoot me down. But hearing what these residents are saying tonight convinces me more than ever that this is the right thing to do, that we need to get this community back on its feet. And in the interest of us getting the next step, because we're quickly running out of building season, as you can feel tonight, it's raining, it's cold, it's going to be snowing before we know it. This decision has to be made now if anything is going to happen this year. So with that said, we'd entertain that proposal.
Thanks.
So it'd be the exact same proposed amendment, except changing two years to one year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I would still recommend to the mayor and to the city council, if there's no more, there may be more discussion, that we take item six C first under the revised proposal, and then deal with six B afterward accordingly, paying the ordinance.
So at this time for six C, let's go ahead and have a discussion to adopt an ordinance authorizing execution of an amendment to the existing annexation agreement for the Oaks of Irish Prairie dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand and five, relative to removal of the clubhouse, changes to architectural standards, and the reduction of impact fees.
To one year and fifty percent.
To one year, fifty percent. Alderman Curry?
Yeah, question for the gentleman from Dr. Horton. He can step back up.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the fifty percent reduction for one year now, and I, I won't get to this, but I guess, how many housing starts we could be looking at in that, between now and the next September, I guess?
It's hard to say, it's really market-driven. If I had, if I had to guess and not, not be held to it, well, let me, let me back up. We did a deal similar to this about a year and a half ago, and I think in the first year, we pulled sixty-one building permits. And that was in a community that over the past previous two years had pulled four building permits. So it could be that high, it could be in the mid twenties, it could be somewhere in between. But we've lost some building season since this conversation has started. How many homes am I getting in ground before the end of the calendar year? Not as many if, if, you know, if we were able to kind of get to some resolution earlier, but I could see us certainly starting somewhere in the neighborhood of ten homes still this year, developing the community. And then obviously, construction and earnest would begin digging new foundations in the spring.
And just follow up, maybe to Ross, I'm not sure, but so, when you say you pulled so many permits, so when they pulled a permit, so you could pull a permit on, say, September twentieth of two thousand and eighteen, and they would get this benefit, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then how long do they have to, when you pull that permit, how long do you have to build?
One year.
One year. All right, thank you.
Alderman Camden?
Two things, because I wanted to say this before we switch the agenda items, but I still think it's relevant. First of all, I commend you for seeing what the community is saying, the residents that are there, and being willing to work with us and with them. I still think, and this does go more to this item, to item B, excuse me, that overall, and I think Alderman Santi was alluding to this, that we still need to reevaluate what our impact fees are. A whole lot has changed since the development, since the economy crashed and is now rebuilding, and we do need to identify that. So I certainly would support that. I don't know how long something like that would take, and as development continues to come, more development presumably would be coming, so, you know, the impact's going to be greater and greater. So I do think that's something that we need to do. We need to study what our future impact fees are going to be overall, so I would agree with that. But I also wanted to note something, I guess for clarification, it was mentioned here tonight, and I think in the, in the community in general, and it's not specific to this, but with all due respect to Mayor Jet, who has been phenomenal at spearheading a lot of new development in this community, I really hope that the community understands that a lot of things that have developed in the last couple of years were initiated before Mayor Jet. Now, he has, he has expanded upon that, but things that have come to fruition started under Mayor Lau and the alderman and myself that were here previously, and a lot of that goes to Director Martin and his vision, I guess, and a lot of hard work in recruiting businesses to come here. So I just wanted that to be clarified, and with all due respect, because Mayor Jet has expanded upon that, but a lot of that has come to fruition because of previous council, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? None? All right. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing execution of an amendment to the existing annexation agreement for the Oaks of Irish Prairie dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand and five, relative to removal of the clubhouse, changes to architectural standards, and the reduction of impact fees of fifty percent for one year. Alderman McKebic?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I will second.
Alderman Camden? Discussion on the item. Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman McKebic?
Yes.
Alderman Camden?
Yes.
Alderman Dibay?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glaia?
No.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that is passed. The next item on the agenda is the, I'm looking for a motion to approve an ordinance amending section eight, developer donations to the city of McHenry's subdivision ordinance and an ordinance amending article four of chapter twenty-six, water and sewer capital development fee, section twenty-six dash two oh-two, amount of the city of McHenry municipal code, both providing for the reduction of fees by fifty percent through September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Alderman Camden?
I will make that motion.
Second? Alderman Santi?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion on the item. See none? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Camden?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glaia?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman McKebic?
Yes.
Alderman Dibay?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Evante, Dr. Horton, I appreciate all the effort that you put into coming into the city of McHenry. I am super excited to get you guys starting to build. I know the, you know, the community is, has a spark to it, and it's exciting what can come, and thank you very much. I appreciate that, and good luck. And to all the residents, thank you for the support, and all the council as well for the support of getting this done. It was a big thing to get done, and it took a few meetings, but we got it. And to staff, Ross, you know, Doug, and obviously Derek over here for getting this done. So it took a whole team, but we got it done, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is discussion items. We have none. Pass it over to staff for staff reports. You guys can leave here, you don't have to put it up in the room anymore.
Thanks again.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Rotary Sunrise Club, they did a nice job with October just off Peterson Park for the weekend. Nice, nice event, good venue for them.
Any other staff reports? All right. Mayor and city council comments? I have nothing seeming. Any city council? Alderman Schaefer?
Just to follow up on what Director Hopson was talking about, did you have any conversations with Rotary? Were they happy with that location and the results so far?
From the brief conversations that I had, it seems like that they have, we'll do, we'll do a follow-up and make sure that it wasn't what they anticipated, what it seemed like.
Just let us know or put that in the board?
What, we have a member right, right here.
Oh.
For those who don't know, I did join the Sunrise Rotary this year, so I spent the whole day there. They were extremely happy. It was a little bit of learning, Curry, they got a lot of help from the afternoon club for some guidance, and it was, it was a success. They did very well compared to what they've done in the past years, and they're looking forward to building upon it for next year.
And with the setting at Peterson Park?
Yep.
Excellent.
Yeah, they were really, I think their words were, this was their chance to make a home at home for their, not have to worry about where they were going to go from year to year, so I think you'll look forward to them coming back to build for a permit for next year.
Thank you.
Alderman?
I just want to say that over the weekend, I had to bother the chief on an issue as far as parking out on the streets overnight for the entire complex, as far as hedge ceiling and everything for their lot, and I want to apologize to him that I had to bother him so late on a weekend.
No, that's, that's quite all right. We did get a notification too, it just went from midnight sergeant.
But I just want to say the chief took care of it and followed up and got back to me shortly, and I appreciate the efforts, and I think he needs to be noted that he did that.
Thank you. Alderman Camden?
Just to welcome back to Director Schmidt.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he's here?
Oh. Get to work.
Were you good?
Anyone else? See none? Okay, moving on to executive session. Once I go into a boat here, I ask that all of you please exit the room. We're entering executive session, potential litigation, I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session. Alderman Schaefer?
So?
Second?
Alderman Santi? Second motion.
Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yeah.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman McKebic?
Yes.
Alderman Dibay?
Yes.
Yes.